All right. Call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody. Stand, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To do republic or which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have our invocation Reverend Gail Brown, the interim pastor at the Groston Baptist Church.
I'm honored to be here and I'm going to ask that you bow your head as I share a very wonderful prayer. Many of you have heard it. Prayer of Saint Francis of Assisi. It's a prayer that we can all relate to as we look at our backgrounds and our belief system. Lord make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is discord, harmony. Where there is error, truth. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to be understood, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Father, as we stand here tonight, we thank you for these, your servants, and I offer a prayer of thanksgiving for each one who is here tonight to conduct the business in this meeting. I pray that you will give each one of them wisdom, that you will give them discernment, courage, as they serve their community. We make this prayer. Amen.
I just have one announcement to start with and that was, I was hoping that we would have a thumb drive that we could show some of the scenes from the play that was put on at Owen High School a couple of weeks ago. The drama teacher Lynn Nyheart and the kids that put on The Foreigner. My children have been in many plays at Owen High School over the years, especially back in the 1980s, I mean 1990s and then the 2000s. But this is probably one of the finest plays I've ever seen those folks put on. If you got to go to it, you know what I mean. If you didn't, you missed something. Hopefully next year I'll try to get Mr. Nyheart to let us know a little bit in advance. I know it was in the Black Mountain News, but so that we also can go ahead and announce it on TV. All right, we have one proclamation here. It's Building Safety Month. And whereas our state's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy, efficiency, and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. Whereas our confidence achieves through the devotion of the diligent guardians, building safety, fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety, the safe construction of the buildings. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code of the Council of Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. Whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve safety and sustainability at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments and federal agencies protecting the lives of property. Now therefore I see Michael Sobel, Mayor of the town of Black Mountain Duke hereby proclaim Mayor 14th is Building Safety Month according to our courage, our citizens to join with our communities in promotion of building safety awareness. Signed this 12th day of May 2014. Dan's not here, but we are very lucky to have in our employee here, Dan. I know that when I first got into the building business, I had some issues with Dan. But basically, it was by the book. It had nothing to do with Michael Sobel, it had nothing to do with Tom Jones or anything. This is the way it's supposed to be and this is the way it's gonna be. And he doesn't slack up or doesn't give any favors. He's fair across the board. Some people don't like it, but because of him, we do have a lot safer buildings here. All right, next, citizen's comment. You've got citizen comments, Elaine Lutzenheiser.
This is on the hearing.
And the public hearing, you want to wait till then? And then Marilyn Sabansky.
Representing Rainbow Recycling. You've seen me up here before? Well, spring and planting go hand in hand, so maybe you've already had your hands in the dirt setting those flowers and vegetable plants and bushes and trees in their designated spots. And if so, you're likely to have a stash or two of plastic flower pots and trays. And the question is, what do you do with them if you no longer want them? They do not go in your curbside recycling bin. Even though they have numbers on them, they do not go there. The distinction being what goes in your curbside recycling bin are containers for food, for personal care items like shampoo, and cleaning items like laundry detergent, window cleaner, et cetera. So what can you do with them if you no longer want them? Well, we've got two flower pot recycling events coming up on the next two Saturdays and you can bring them there. So this coming Saturday, May 17th, 9 to 4 at the Black Mountain Garden Show and sale at the Montevista, we're offering our free recycling collection for all your plastic pots, trays, and markers, whether they're intact or broken. We've done this the last five years and so we're continuing the tradition. What you need to do is remove most of the dirt, either rinse, shake, or tap them, and then bag them. We do not take clay, wood, or metal containers or hangers. And if you'd like some pots, you're welcome to come by and pick up whatever you'd like, as is, free, on a first come, first served basis. Now, we've started a new flower pot recycling collection created with waste reduction partners, especially designed to help those growers and landscapers who have large quantities of pots that are harder to deal with and we simply don't have space for a vehicle large enough and collection area large enough at the garden show. So the following Saturday, May 24th, at Appalachian Creek Nursery, which is off Highway 70 in Swananoa, just a little bit west of War and Wilson Road, we're having the Lots of Pots Recycling Event. It's also open to any home gardeners, so it's anybody who's got flower pots. And it's also free. Same items will be taken, your plastic flower pots, trays, and plant markers, and the same preparation, remove most of the dirt, and bag, bag them, or box them. Now if you happen to be a business or will be sharing this information with a business who has quantities of flower pots larger than a pickup truck load, they need to contact us specifically for more detailed instructions. It's a little bit more involved. And at both of these events, you're welcome to pick up any flower pots and trays that you can reuse, as is. At both of these events, we'll be combining the total of flower pots and all collected and take them to a recycler in Hickory. But we won't get paid for the material, they're just not able to at this point. So we appreciate donations to cover the cost of the fuel to get down there. If you have any questions, you can ask me right now or call at 669-5459 or info@rainbowrecycling.org.
As usual, thank you very much for all the time and effort that you put into this, Dan. Okay, Jack Buchanan. He's gonna give us annual report on the Historic Preservation Committee.
The purpose of the Historic Preservation Commission is to assist the Board of Alderman in preserving and raising awareness of structures that have state, local, and federal historic significance. The commission's responsibility include recommending areas to be designated as historic districts or individual structures, building sites, areas or objects to be designated as landmarks, review proposals for alterations, demolition, and new construction within the regulatory downtown historic district, and educating the community about the town's historic resources. The activities that we had this past year include nine minor works, projects, signs, awnings, and repairs, and those are detailed in the second page of your report. We had one certificate for appropriateness that we approved for the addition of a deck to the exterior of the Debiti House located at 120 Broadway. And finally, the commission members and the staff fulfilled the training requirements to maintain the certified local government standing for the town by participating in training provided by Town Attorney Ron Snead on September, I mean December 18th, 2013, and training provided by Jennifer Kathy and Amy McDonald of the State Historic Preservation Western Office on February 19th, 2014. A town attorney, Ron Snead, provided training about quasi judicial procedures. And Jennifer Kathy and Annie McDonald provided training about rehabilitation and materials. And this also included a review of our guidelines, design guidelines, which prompted us to take as the project this year to review those because they haven't been reviewed in the last decade. Of course, if those reviews create any changes, they'll be sent to the planning board for approval and then come to you. The Historic Commission looks forward to continuing its effort in the coming year of working with the Board of Alderman to maintain historic preservation in the town. And that's your report, if you have any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, that's the annual report.
Let me ask you a couple of questions, Jack. This is in the relation to, well, let's just say generally. When renovating an inside of a building, is, are there certain things that they have to do? Obviously, the outside of the building has to maintain its character, but...
All the things that we review are the outside of the building. Interiors usually don't get reviewed unless the site is actually a historic building like the Montevista is. That might create an internal...
Let me just ask one specific. What about the old antique store on the corner of Sutton and Cherry? Have you all been looking at that one? The reason I'm asking is because a lot of people are asking me what's going on there and I'm saying, "Well, I guess it's probably gotta go to the preservation, you know, historic committee."
I don't think we've had requests. The architect or the owner of the building submits a request for a design change. And we have not had one for that location yet.
Very good, thanks. Appreciate your work. Thanks for volunteering. All right. I'm assuming that that's Mr. Greg Stiles walking to the podium.
I am.
With Baker, with Michael Baker Corporation. He's gonna be giving a hydrology study report for the Greenway.
That's a gag, right? Pretty entertaining.
Just step on the pedal, that's all you need.
Yeah, I need to make it stand. All right. This is my little magic clip here. Thank you and for the opportunity to be here and more importantly, for the opportunity to work on this project. This is an exciting project for me personally and for our company. And I'm a citizen of Black Mountain and active in Greenways. And so, you know, I want to see my property values increase and want to see the town be healthy and improve the quality of life. So I'm vested in this personally as well. This is the report. It was submitted in final form on last week and on May 6th. And I'm a professional engineer. Our firm also does in-stream restoration work as a specialty that we do here in North Carolina. I'm personally a transportation engineer with specialty in structures. And we have hydrologists that are flood pain administrators and hydrologists working on this study altogether. This is just a series of slides that really emphasize the connectivity that this section of the Greenway can provide locally to get people out and about, as you can see, all the way from Montree through the Riverway Park, through the Dog Park, and connecting to the elementary schools, and then finally in the Oaks, which would then connect you on down. I ran parts of it today and it's really, it's a beautiful river and a great resource. And you all are all aware of that, so. The other thing I wanted to point out from the experiences that I've had and that I'm sure that the other planners and Greenways experts here from your Parks Department have had, is that connectivity is the key. And the east-west corridor is one of the things that Connect Buncombe has emphasized for funding opportunities for the regional trail. So if we can connect from down the mountain up and into Asheville, this is showing up as a high priority on the recent 2012 Greenways Master Plan. Now here's the detailed area of study that we were asked to evaluate. And obviously from reviewing the correspondence, some of these structures that are in this little section here that the Riverwalk Park would extend along Swananoa, I would say, how do they perform in this situation? In the context, we have, I'll start in this order and present them in a series of slides and show you some renderings of what are just featuring what's in the report. But the Norfolk Southern Railroad and then two culverts that are property of NCDOT. We did obtain limited survey. Within the budget that was allocated, we were able to pick up two of the structures and we chose the railroad bridge and also the Highway 9 culvert to do the localized survey. Now that survey is valuable in that we can use that for the flood submissions to FEMA that come later in subsequent phases of this preliminary engineering. So starting at the Swananoa River, this is a culvert area that has upstream of it, you'll see this area right here where there's a debris jam upstream that's causing the natural river which would flow normally in the two center bays of this four bay culvert to move into the outside bays and that's causing erosion of the banks. It's also causing this downstream sort of island. If you've been behind Pizza Hut, you'll see there's a little island out there and that's somewhat, I would say, a lack of maintenance. But it's also a situation that shows the flood study data when we take the flood studies. I guess I need to put it in context, but let me show you the next map. Okay, so to put this map into context, you'll see one of these maps for each of the three structures. And the white line is the approximate proposed Greenway path alignment. So north is gonna be up on all three of these maps. You can see in the bottom right, you can see the interstate, and then this is the off-ramp. The area that's unshaded or I guess it's slightly hatched with a crosshatching pattern, that's the floodway. That's where the flood moves with force and that's the floodway. The lighter kind of light white, bluish white area is the, that's the flood plain for the 100-year recurrence event flood, which is the regulatory flood. And then the dark blue is the 500-year storm. That's the limits of essentially backwater on either side that would extend. So for, in the situation of these three culverts, the context is any structure that's in the floodway, so anything within the dark blue and inward, that is, if you have any structures that are in that flood plain that are affected by a project you propose such as this one in the floodway, then you have to demonstrate that your project causes zero rise in the 100-year flood elevation. And so that's basically FEMA regulation and that's law based on, you know, those are the regulations that the flood maps have to follow. So it's not as simple because we do have like Ollies or the other properties that are actually in the flood plain, we need to do the detailed analysis. And in 20, well, when we had the new maps come in, these maps are based on detailed studies that have actual hydrological predictions modeled into the study. So when Flat Creek was modeled, as you recall, I was here at some of those meetings as an interested citizen in Montree as well, looking at those maps of Flat Creek going, "Wow, how did we get to this situation where there's so much water?" It's just, it's incredible how high the flood plains moved up. Those are not likely to change. So in effect, we've been dealt these infrastructure culverts that are now insufficient for what we have to deal with. So they're essentially obsolete in that regard. Anyway, that's just the background. But the dash line is not a crosswalk, that's going underneath. I want to show you the spur to the sidewalk and I've got a little picture that'll float in here. And this would be from the ABC store looking backwards. So one of the concerns when I first initiated discussion with DOT, which has now been picked up by the town staff and will support, continue to support them with the railroad and DOT coordination, was about safety. And obviously, when you put people in a space, and not just the safety of surface and signing and things that we'll get to, but is someone gonna be attacked? Is there gonna be some kind of, you know, hazard for someone being in there? And I think that is valid in itself, but it's also, needs to be balanced with the safety of people trying to cross the road without having to wait forever or having to deal with people from all over using the highway intersections and interchange. So at-grade safety when you're walking over the street versus safety through the culvert. This sidewalk spur that we show is one idea that can help mitigate. If you're standing in a straight path and you can see all the way through and there's a threat, you can jump up to the sidewalk network. So it's also an access point for people that are in the town to get down onto the trail. You want to have as many access points for use as you can. Now this is an example because it has, it's a good picture and it's not in this state, but it does have a good example. If we zoom in, on that right bay, we can see some of the culverts amenities that we would be designing in more detail for safety and for good engineering practice. And one of them would be this concrete surface. Concrete outperforms asphalt when you're in a floodway. It's a very durable surface. You think about the life cycle of some of these facilities. If they have to get replaced or repaired or repaved on a regular basis, that's a major labor expense for the town and for the maintaining municipality, whoever it is. But it would be major, so concrete surface is key. Also railings. Railings are a bit of a trick. If you can avoid railings in the floodway, you want to because they collect debris. But you need to be conscious of safety, people falling off and into creeks or other hazards. So that's a balance. Lighting, this is standard, Department of Transportation, NCDOT has standard drawings for underpass lighting, so that's not unusual. We would need to make them vandal proof and you would want also to upgrade them for waterproof and vandal proof. And there would be a long-term electric bill that would likely be passed on to you or whatever the agreement was with NCDOT. And finally, signing. Signing is important both for the, you know, prone to flood. I think I zoomed in on this one trying to read it in better detail, but things like, you know, we would need to come up with the right appropriate signing. We've got some pictures of how that might look on these next slides. One of the issues with this culvert over the other two is that it does have a low headroom clearance. But I'm 6'5" and try to ride a mountain bike sometimes and I look like a giraffe at the circus, but 7'6", I would be comfortable getting under 7'6". And so what we worked with the hydrologist was to model how high, you know, how high can we get and still make the flood study work through this culvert?
What was that?
7'6" is, I'm comfortable with 7'6". I think we're right now, we're in that same, we're in the 7'7", but it could be, it could be adjusted, I think, by some of, as I said, the flooding in the water surface that was surveyed has to be taken. You start with the effective model and then you modify the effective model based on the detailed survey, and then that's the model that you have to use in a culvert. And culverts have to be modeled as if they're flushed open, not any existing embankment that's in there because that's just the way the FEMA requires you to do it, the flood mapping administrators, because a big storm would come in and wash through things that weren't paved down. So danger-prone flooding would be a good example. When I was, had the opportunity to see this one, I don't think this is necessarily, you know, the appropriate one, but it does have a little more graphic representation. They use this on the west coast when you're driving to a park and you see this. It's like, "I don't think I want to go to this park right now. I don't see any high ground." But, you know, a combination of graphics and words that communicate for the safety. This is a crude rendering of kind of the positioning of the culvert and the pathway through there. And really, in conclusion, for this structure, a no rise can be achieved. This was actually the easiest structure as far as the minimum amount of work that needed to be done. It does have some highway drainage inlets on the curb that are right by the sidewalks that you probably don't see, but you could realize as you go over that drain directly into the bay of the culvert. So those would need to be rerouted out to the banks and down into riprap channels or protected and somehow, there's other ways to handle that. But those would have to be handled, the lighting, the signing, and the pavement and the embankment, as well as what we call benching. So upstream from the culvert, you create a benched-down flattened area, which is natural anyway in conjunction with the path coming up and out of the culvert bay, and that is the relief. So although you've created more of an obstruction, then you have this area where the obstructed water can go into without interfering or raising the flood elevations at the affected properties or potentially affected properties. Budget's very rough at this stage. It's very difficult and there's, you know, but this one has essentially, it's just grading and the paving, the electrical. You would also need the agreements with DOT and you would need the, this is not including maintenance cost or design or the path in between. This is kind of just budget numbers to focus on. Okay, the railroad bridge. Again, here, this is to orient yourselves to the railroad bridge. It's right down the center there. You can see that it's a wider flood plain in this area. The path would come from the Dog Park in the lower left of your screen and go through the side bay. I've got a rendering. Here's a series of before and afters, if you will, that kind of, they don't show all the details, but they show you some of the concepts, so we're all talking about the same thing. This would be the path regardless of what the supporting structure was. You know, this is the path alignment that was studied. You know, there's always other opportunities or alignments if things broke down, but this seems like an ideal one to be on the developed bank and to move, you know, to move forward as a primary location. 10-foot wide was studied, so that's about a 12-foot structure. And to get it as low as possible to try to avoid a railing if we could. But then again, you know, I don't know that I would send my kids down along there, beginner bikers, which is the kind of people we're trying to attract without a railing. So a simple railing, we would also need a canopy due to the railroad requirements that we'll talk about later. Here's from the other angle. So you've walked down from town and there's a couple of features here that I want to point out that were revealed to us during the study that kind of elaborate on the challenges. This is a very deep pool and it's a very deep scour pool. And you can imagine as you see, looking upstream here, you see the river takes a very sharp bend to get into... And you can imagine as you see, looking upstream here, you see the, uh, the river takes a very sharp bend to get into the railroad. And this is really the, the cause of the problem that, uh, of the challenge that we have at this, at this crossing. Because you get a lot of force during a, a heavy flood that needs to be redirected and it's right now creating a big scour hole. Um, as far as the railroad goes, this could actually be an opportunity to help us. Because if we can improve the hydraulics of the flow of the, of the forceful water through the bridge. Then that would help reduce the potential for scour on their structure, like that far retaining wall and their abutments. That would also be subjected, but the bridge has to withstand this type of scour. Um, the other somewhat minor constraint, but still uh influential in some ways. You have the, the drainage ditch that comes down um from Sutton or Depot, which uh from the street there from town. And then this is, this is again, going to show you, this is the before picture. And then here's a, a picture after of about the path height. This, it could be lowered, we'd still want to keep it as low as possible, but to keep it out of the river. And then to, to kind of give you a cleaner picture of that. Here's a, a bridge type of structure um that was looked at. Now, we, we also looked at an embankment structure that basically would be constructing a flood wall on that far face from this view. And so the challenge there is that scour hole and what type of foundation would be strong enough to present the um storm events with scouring at that foundation wall. But a combination of in river work, as far as budgeting goes, we look to. Seek monies from, and help you seek monies from whatever opportunities there are to add to the towns funds to, to help conserve the towns funds. So um as we look at this type of bridge, this is a, a very conventional bridge. You know, the state with all their, with all their recent um off system bridge replacements are producing a lot of this type of bridge. So it's very cost effective, it's very durable. It has a very clean line, so it's not into catching a lot of um material. And we also need to be able to get into that rock of the foundation in such a way that it won't be scoured out and collapse the bridge. So um, this is a type of structure, these drilled shafts that you see the small picture of there for the pier can do that effectively. It's difficult to construct the foundations under the bridge and then you would need to span between the two piers that are on either side of the bridge. So again, as the more expensive alternative to document at this phase, obviously, this is not the only one that works. Either one worked with the appropriate um, with the appropriate channel modification. So basically carving out about a two foot, dropping the thaw wig or the bottom of the, the stream bed about two feet in the center. And tapering that back up is really what's going to create right now is a backwards type of, of flow. So the water sits in that pool and then it has to jump up enough like a dam to get over it. So if we can carve that out, that solves the hundred year flood problem. So really, that, that part is not the challenge, it's more resisting with a durable structure. Um, the railroad coordination is something um that is. In one way straightforward, in another way can be frustrating because it just takes a long time. But we've done this before, this is something that um, that personally I'm familiar with, with coordinating with the railroads. And they have a process and we have to follow the process. There would be an agreement, we send them the, something like that concept sketch with a letter and the sponsor name and who to contact. And then you would move forward through the process on the next page, there's a, a piece out of here. But basically it shows, it lists all the steps. Send us your plans at thirty percent, we'll send it to our reviewer. Our reviewer will assess what it, you know, and then back and forth, back and forth to address all their concerns. It's, it's um, it's a process, but given that the improvements that we would propose, they, their concerns are going to be safety of their facilities. Don't interrupt their operations, don't interfere and don't get in the way of them being able to replace that structure in the future. So you would want to give it a year time while you're underway during the solid design phase to do that. And they're going to require a canopy. Um, it could be simple, it could be elegant, but it needs to be a protective canopy for anything that might fall, rattle down or have ballast that comes down from the railroad track bed. That was a picture that suggesting maybe, you know, we could style it after something like the depot, the old depot since it's essentially in the same view. So in summary, um. This is, this is looking at the, the rail bridge from the uh, from the north looking downstream under it. It's a straight shot down there, so uh potentially an easement from that uh multi-use housing development that lies on the bank uh upstream. Would be an ideal place where you could actually construct the bridge and maybe even push it out. So we can't just have a crane and fly it in because of the bridges there and there's, there's restrictions. But um. There's detail on that three hundred thousand uh number inside and we would obviously design it to be as efficient as possible within the criteria. Okay, the, I guess clarifying challenge for the upstream culvert is that this is, this is truly like a hu- a hydraulic bottleneck. The, there's Ollies in the background in yellow. With the detailed flood studies, the maps that you see, um, well, they're in the, they're in the report. But the maps actually come all the way up to almost to over top the roadway there now. Um, so that culvert is significantly undersized. Um, there, you know, we started out looking at trying to get the greenway through this third bay and that's still a possibility. And a couple of alternatives that we looked at. Oh, here's the map. Um, you can see the broad extent of the white line, um, of the white shaded areas. Uh, okay, so and then this is coming down through there, it, it's a real pinch point. So on the next page, this is a rendering, uh, and it's um of two relief culverts that would be offset downstream. So it would be like what they call a jack and bore operation. Which is a bit of a challenge since we're up on the embankment or it could be a cut and cover where you'd have to have traffic control. I think we're fortunate, there's plenty of room up on the top for any type of shifting traffic around. Uh, but it is more significant than we were, we were hoping to find. But given that any um blockage needs to be offset. Uh, this is one alternative, uh, another alternative is on the next slide. Where you would essentially add a, a, a fourth bay. That fourth bay could even be separate a little ways down, there's still enough vertical clearance where you could have some offset, which may actually be easier to construct. But generally a culvert to construct a culvert, we do design build um all the time uh for NC DOT style structures. It's hard to, to, to get a contractor to build you a culvert for under three hundred thousand dollars. So I think that um, that's a good budget for which you can go forward to say, we're going to try to hone in on it from there and come down. Uh, the other thing we did look at is in it, some of the pictures on your report, but not on the screen. And that is actually notching down into the bottom of the culvert bottom, which has been done and maybe appropriate. Especially this is a wider culvert, so you would still have some footing foundation area. You basically create a trough in the other bays to offset. But the, the, what doesn't work quite as well here for that is that Flat Creek is at this point truly very flat. And so you'd have to chase that out with stream work to make that, that work. So we recommend moving forward with this as you pursue funding and, and advance the design, so if that's appropriate. Here's kind of how it looks in the model and I stretched it really wide so that it helps to see it. But you can see there's four of those rectangular white bays inside of the covered area. And that's representing the additional culvert and then the black is the little shaded area where the trail would be. And the, the important thing about this compared to all the others, all the other alternatives essentially just gave us a no rise condition, which means that the flood never changed. Just, yes, we blocked it and then we kept it right back where it was, which is what you're required to provide. If you, if you look at the circled highlighted areas over here in the change, this is actually bringing down the flood elevation. So that, that, that may have opportunities for grant funding um from other sources that improve or lower the floodplain. Um, that's something that to pursue would be recommended. As much as two and a half feet locally and then it tapers, but a foot maybe, you know, that could be helpful to some of the properties to eliminate their flood insurance. Um. Again, this being all the amenities that are involved in trying to make this work, we recommend going with the higher budget um for this structure of four hundred fifty thousand. So that's the formal presentation and I'd be willing to entertain any questions that you have.
I've got some questions, I'll let you all go. Let's go back to uh number nine. Highway number nine.
Okay.
Um, when you were speaking about, as you were standing on the uh west side looking in and you were speaking about the bank and the erosion back there. Forcing that water into that culvert. Um, uh, it was my understanding, uh, and this is, this is fifteen years ago. I was speaking with Dave Baker uh from the um Army Corps of Engineers. And he said that one of the things that, that, that can be done there is to go ahead and on that east side. Is to build a, a, a wall of some, sort of a retention wall like the light like this, maybe two feet, maybe two and a half feet tall. Such that then forces that water into those other three barrels. Cause there's four barrels in that particular uh, at, at the Pizza Hut. And so that then, you never have to worry about the water in there unless you do get a flood.
Right.
Which was why the extra culvert's there anyway is just for the flood, so that you end up putting, putting that up there. Uh, is, is, is that something that you had looked at?
We considered that at the low flow elevation, so that would be, you would have a curb wall. Or um, a wall that would allow you to keep the, the path in functioning and open. Um, and, and move the, that could be also done with other grading, just, you know, with bulldozers and earth moving equipment as well as uh riprap. So that concept is good, but the regulatory requirement is under the hundred year event. So now we're talking about the culvert's all full and the water's even coming up the side of the top of the headwall of the culvert. And we can't let that water rise according to the uh floodplain administrators.
Yeah, but that, yeah, but this wall wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't affect that at all. Because I mean, if, if we, if we got that much water, water's coming over the wall.
Right.
I mean, the water's under, I mean, the wall.
So at the low, you're talking about at the low flow condition?
Exactly.
That, that is exactly what would be detailed out in, in a final design that, that you would have a, that type of retention.
I had several uh engineers from the state over the, over the years to tell me that these culverts were designed for twenty-five year floods, fifty year floods. And uh, but yet and, and in looking around, I've never been able to have any of them come up with any information. As to how they ever came up with flows to justify the size. And so I'm not so sure, do they exist?
Prior to um, prior to this two thousand and study map, two thousand and seven, eight map revision that was finally enacted, I think in nine or ten. And won't be, won't be done again until like seven year cycle now. So they're on the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen before the maps get revised again. Prior to that, they, they used a hydraulic uh method for sizing culverts, basically a simple regression is what they call it. Where you, you just approximate with a plenimeter or some kind of, you know, measuring device, we do it in CAD now. But it would be, how big is this watershed area? You know, what's the intensity of the rainfall? And then how much water is all coming down together? And it was, it was pretty simple.
Good guesstimate.
It was a pretty good guesstimate. But with the detailed uh studies that are now done. And talking with some of the other floodplain uh managers in the region, like Cynthia Barclay from the county. The uh, her recommendation is it's not going to change. The, that once they have that detailed study, that gets integrated into the FEMA, into the FEMA model, the HECCAS model. Which is hydraulic engineering circular. Um, but that's the official model of how everything flows, so. Like I said, it, I agree with you, it's an obsolete.
So when we look at this then, as you said earlier, then we did not have an issue here of a no rise.
Here, here a no rise, we recommend, although we, we have not filed for a no rise because we don't want to move forward with all that until, you know, we, we see that it, that it's appropriate for. You know, it's your decision really to, to move forward when you're ready to. But uh, a no rise is achievable here is what we'll say. A no rise is achievable and we can play around with the wall, like you say, and you could even lower the path below the wall, but you got to drain that out. I mean, there's different features, but it can be made to work and headroom was the issue here.
Isn't that a ten footer?
No, thi- this one's a nine footer, so when we take out a foot and a half, one point six feet, I think is what we modeled. And it could work at that, so that gave us enough confidence that we could put a ten foot wide path through there.
Okay, that's another question, why ten? Why, why, why are we going with a road that's, I mean, we put a road through there, not a pass?
Right, well, um, and that is, that's often a decision that, that. Because what we're doing is we're trying to give you a recommendation on, is it feasible that we're going to be able to get a no rise? We don't want to go down the path and say, oh, we only used a six foot. But you got, you know, really by the time we put railings, we need an eight or that wall makes it ten. We wanted to go with something that's wider at this stage and if we have to live in the future with like an eight foot. We used a larger.
That drawl decision has nothing to do with regulatory action?
No, it doesn't need to be ten. Um, the rules on that are that if it's, if it's wider than, if it is ten feet, you need to put a bollard up so that no vehicles get on it. So that's.
Yeah, I think that, I would think that's a little bit wide. Also too, you mentioned, you mentioned railings. Um, um. When you showed the picture there of the one in Colorado.
Yeah.
You know, and then you had the metal railings there. Um, what is the regulatory uh language for using breakaway railings?
That is, I mean, the railing is not going to come into the model at all. It won't, it won't be.
That's not going to affect the no rise.
That's more of working between, is this uh, you know, building, it's not a building, so you don't want to go as far. There's, there's guidelines for the ASHTO, which is transportation officials um code. There's guidelines for when and not, when you can and cannot.
All right, the last question on number nine then is for the drainage. Uh, because in that, on that uh north wall is where that uh looks like about an eighteen inch.
There's several pipes come straight from the roadway.
Yeah, because what they did was if you go back towards the railroad, about in front of the ABC store and then about in front of the Shell station. Those culverts that are on the left sides and those drain on the road itself, then go to the center of the road.
Okay.
And then they come down. So there's a lot of water that's going to be in there.
There's two coming into there now then, right? There's the one from the pickups up.
No, there's only one that discharges out of the, out of that wall.
Okay.
Uh, there's only, there's, there, there's only one, which, which it seemed to me like that, that's one of the things we were stunned about, about how cheap this one was. We were stunned at how expensive the others were.
Well, I think there's two ways to handle that and we thought, thought through that and that could be something, you know, that is something that we have to deal with. But um, one way would be to move the path to the other side of that culvert and put a shield or some sort of downward and then a, a channelized riprap. Cause when you have, you know, you would assume that the, the strength, the street drainage is going to be nearly the same level as the creek drainage. Or at some point, one's going to control over the other, but uh, you can take it out within the culvert in a side channel, because that's sixteen feet wide. So you've got some room to work with.
So, so there's a possibility then of, of, of going ahead and then, and then putting a uh, a sloped pipe.
Or deflector shield that just turns it into, you know, it directs it downwards so it's not splashing right out. I mean, you're going to get.
Yeah, because that certainly would be the cheapest way.
That would be preferred. Now, the thing is if you're modifying a structure, DOT usually wants you to bring it up to code, just like a building and such. But um, it might be, there might be a way, yeah, otherwise, if it's coming down from the upper uh storm drainage up the street.
Yeah, that's going to have to be, we're going to have to go into Terry State Drive and dig and then put another culvert come down, okay.
Probably an open channel in the existing culvert would be the, the cheapest way right now.
Okay, up at the, up at the railroad, um, um, you've got a very, you've got a long straight path through there. I mean, that's what you're proposing.
I agree.
In that, uh. That is not, that is just one concept that you have.
That is one concept, yeah.
Because it would seem to me like that the people, talking to other people and, and when I say that I've been. Nineteen ninety-four, a gentleman, Michael Blaine and I basically designed the greenway system through town and had been working on it. For a lot of moons, so needless to say, there was a lot of time invested in this, a lot of talk and a lot of different, different, different people. But one thing that we were looking at was to go ahead and to go ahead and follow that bank on around and then come across the stream that drains Sutton. And just, and just have it snake right up against that bank.
Right, okay.
And then, and so then therefore the, instead of having to go out into the river where that yellow arrow was.
Right.
Where the scour is, kick it over onto the bank. People don't like straight, straight, straight lines anyway. That's one of the things, greenways have always, everything you read about it, they want, people want curves, you know, the more curves.
I, I saw the same concept in which you could even balance it if you had to and turn it into a big S curve and, and kind of.
Yeah.
Horse you it, horse you it in and around.
That's a possibility.
And stay on the bank. I think that one of the concerns there, if you, I mean, the picture up there on the screen now shows that red bush there in the, in the, in the lawn, that property. shows that red bush there in the, in the lawn. That property owner, that property right there is something that if we didn't, if we did go onto the bank, we would have to probably engage one more property owner in the process. So that was.
They're going to have to be engaged anyway, and I'm not so sure that that property owner that has that, judging from where the, I was on the MSD Board, and that's where the sewer line went through also, and so that.
There's an easement already through there?
Well, not so much that we could piggyback on that, on that easement, because it's just, it's, it's a, it's a utility easement, it's not a general easement.
Another.
But, but, but anyway, bottom line is, that's, that's, that's.
It's still a possibility. The, if you look straight in the background, you can see the green trees in that flat yard area is where the.
That's about where the property line is.
Okay.
Matter of fact, there's a telephone pole this way, you can't see it, but back in there is a telephone, and that, that's where the actual, because see, that's a street coming down through there. That's a designated street.
Okay. The other concern, it has to do with railroads and, you know, you saw the illustration in their rendering of an embanked area where you just put one wall alongside, you know, you would think that would be cheaper. It might be, you could still wrap that and, and, you know, put it into a serpentine alignment. But the thing with the railroads is they want to be able to see and replace their structure. So you'd have to agree that you would tear that down if they ever needed to come in. And they may not allow it at all if they feel like they need to be able to see their.
What's, you know, and, and, and of course, I know that you're looking down the road for concrete versus, you've already said, the concrete, that lasts asphalt, especially when you get storm, storm damage in there. But it could be in our situation here that it, it may be that wooden structures may be the way to go, because of the fact of just the sheer expense of putting it in and then we just have to deal with going back in there if in case it does get washed out. When you were there, if you look at the way, you can't see it here, because that wall on the left side, the west side, goes back. But there are presently still, I think, two, there may be three posts in the ground, because that's where people used to walk underneath that bridge. There was a bridge there eighty years ago, and it was there for many, many years. And those support posts are still in the waterway.
That, you know, that is one thing that if you as the owner are willing to accept that lifespan, then, you know, that's a possibility. And this does have a lot of headroom, so you would be able to jack that up. My concern would be that the debris flow and the scour. So you have maybe timber piling, piers in a trestle or some sort of.
All right, see, if you, if you were to look just about the top of where that, where, if you just drew a straight line across the top of Riverwalk and Greenway.
Yes.
Part of the reason why there's so much back in there underneath the railroad is the fact that we used to have a water line across there.
Right.
The town had a water line there for, good gosh, eighty years. So that water line came out, but they never did go ahead and get in there and dredge that down. So this other gentleman I was speaking to was saying that that's probably a good reason why that scour's back there, because it, over those years, it built up. That water line was just laying in the river, I mean, it wasn't very deep at all. So it caught rocks and debris over the years and is, and is, of course, if we were to get all that out, then it would flow as you were, as you were talking, talking.
Now, the hundred-year comes up to almost two feet below, but, you know, the hundred-year is also a regulatory certain map type of thing. So if a lesser storm event wanted to design, the one thing with timber you ought to think about is the uplift and the buoyancy of the timber. That's where a solid slab that was anchored down into the rock is not going to go anywhere. So we could certainly advance that in a comparison. I think you want to have multiple options to go to the railroad. You really, you really do, because they, you know, they might throw a wild card at it.
Because I'm seeing here that your change in the, in the elevation here was, was very, very little.
We're achieving a no-rise, and we did use the option where we had twelve-foot wide by, trying to think what it was. It was, we were trying to get at least a foot and a half off the normal stream flow.
How did the removal of the old sewer line in there? Because we've got a no-rise certificate for that area right now. And, and what was that, what, how much did that lower the river?
It's, you have to take the effective model as it's given, as it's maintained by the floodplain managers for NCD, for North Carolina. And then you, you can take our own survey, which we did at this structure. So we have a modified effective model, and that's the, that's the model that we ran. So we actually surveyed, when was the, when was it taken out, the sewer line?
The sewer line was taken out, huh?
More than a year.
Yeah, I was thinking about it right at the end of the, well, a couple of years after we had the hurricanes, probably oh-seven.
So we're using the effective model, we're using the survey as the profile cross-section in front of the culvert and at the back end, or in front of the bridge and beyond the bridge are now. So what was there prior or does not come into the model evaluation? It's, it doesn't show up in the model when we run it. That, our baseline starts with the survey, what's there, and then we model our proposed improvement. So what was it maybe over, it was on the other side?
No, it was on the left side there. And see, it was a twenty-four-inch line, and it had eighteen blocks, cement blocks in it, probably about the size of that podium that you're standing in. So not a lot of volume.
Yeah, but that's not.
So you're saying that even though, that, even though that was, that was moved out.
Right.
That is of no consequence now.
I mean, we, we have to take what's there now and show that the proposed improvement to what's there now as surveyed, the modified effective model, then to compare to the proposed, that the proposed does not create a rise in the hundred-year flood elevation.
Because it seems odd how that, if you couldn't get your funding and everything for something, and you went ahead and did some work in the river and moved the level down, and then by the time you got to the point of building, what you did to remediate is now, is no longer effective? Because you're saying that the model is contingent upon what is existing at that, at that moment?
Well, they have an effective model, and you have to adjust it, right? They have their model. It's the, it's the. But the creek improvements there are not expected to be, you know, the expensive part of that. So the structure type could be reevaluated for the most economical type selection, which we normally do in, in design.
Yeah, because the creek there is not as flat as it is.
The problem is, it's a dam right now. It's creating a weir and it's, it's not allowing the water. So really, whatever you do is not really changing much, even if you have a little blockage above that. We need to carve down that center of the creek and do some in-stream work.
Which, I mean, that wouldn't be that expensive.
Yeah, that, that part, we didn't, I think fifty thousand dollars or something is a budget amount, you know, for.
I know several people that would love to do that for fifty thousand dollars, that's for sure. Going on up into Oates, so, so the floodplain maps have changed so that now that culvert, you're saying, is undersized?
No, I mean, you size culverts for different storm events depending on the facility that you want to remain open, right? If that was going somewhere else, and, you know, it needed to stay open at all times, you would, you'd make it wider so that it didn't overtop. So I, you know, it is, I'm not sure what that culvert was sized for, but it, they're not sized necessarily for the hundred-year. The hundred-year map is, is a result of, of what hydraulics now, a detailed study that came after the culvert was constructed. You don't necessarily design culverts to pass the hundred-year flood. But given what it is now, any blockage that we have in that, in one of the bays is going to create a rise, because it's basically stopped up, you know, it's jammed up, it's full. So you take away any of that passage area and you have to offset.
Well, noticing as I was walking through that, the one that is closest on the, on the west end, that thing probably, I mean, I didn't dig down to the, to the concrete base on that, but there must be two and a half feet
Yeah, I measured it, yeah. Yeah, I think that was, I think it was thirty, yeah, I think it is two and a half, is it that?
So if we removed all that.
Well, here's the, here's the other thing. You have to model it. If you remove some of that, you don't get to model anything in, in the culvert as it is now, because the assumption is that the big storm flushes the culvert out. It's not, it's not a fun rule, it's not, you know, it doesn't help us in this situation. But I see what you're getting at. If you were able to take some of that down and lower the path elevation, would we get any credit for that, unfortunately?
We're not going to, we're not going to get any.
Not the way the map, mapping works.
So boring, boring, it looks like the simplest thing to do on this one is to bore the two tunnels.
That needs to be, you know, pursued further. I think that probably is the least expensive. The reason, you know, that an additional culvert was presented was so you have enough budget as you go over other opportunities for funding that might be available, if there are any, for, or come available for any other flood reduction or floodplain reduction, because you could take two, one to two feet down in the, in the, in the maps. You know, the rules, that's something that we pursued as well in conjunction with your staff.
All right. I'll probably have more questions later, but for right now, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anybody else got anything?
Yeah, I dig. So basically, what, right now, we're looking at seven hundred to about eight hundred, six thousand, depending on which way we go.
Yeah, those are, you know, relative costs for assessing what needs to be done at that structure and trying to, trying to gauge what needs to be done. There'd be additional costs for the path upgrade. And we may be able to do those with less money than that, depending on what the railroads require of us.
And you talked about a prob, or the possibility of additional funding or grants from other sources.
There's a, yeah, there's a myriad.
How can we find out about that before we start jumping, jumping in the stream?
If I could just speak quickly, there's a, the DOT has a call for projects coming up soon that, and they'll have a kickoff meeting at the end of, end of May, and I think that Josh, the planning director, is taking a look at submitting this as a project for that. That's an eighty-twenty split that the DOT offers, and this might be something that fits in nicely with, with that model. So that, that is an area that, and, and we'll know more probably in June or July when, what our opportunities are there. But they're having a meeting soon, we will go to that and see if that's an opportunity that we have and.
And the eighty would be the town?
No, we would be the twenty. It's an eighty-twenty. They, they would, they absorb eighty and we, and we absorb twenty.
That, that would not be the railroad?
Well, I don't know, I don't, it's a DOT, it's a, you know, it's a DOT-funded project. Now, the railroad will have their own conditions. They're not, the railroad's going to offer no funding for, for, for what they're going to do anyway. So, so we would look at this corridor and submit this as a project, and that would be part, and that would be part of those costs.
Greenways themselves are now transportation facilities.
That's right, and that's how this.
Of the DOT, so the whole corridor, you know, would be a cost that, you know, you could go for the grant funding towards. And towns compete and cities compete for this.
That's the issue, I think, is, you know, it's, obviously it's competitive. There'd be a lot of hands in a pot for the, for the money. But, but again, it's a, you know, you don't, you don't get it if you don't submit something for it.
And you've got, you've got a good background as far as, you know, participation with the region and the fact that this is a regional connector trail. I would certainly continue to play that up and even look at, at the next phase, getting funding all the way to the Oaks, rather than just saying, oh, we're going to go under nine, because then people are going to, well, why, where are you going to go from there?
We've got that figured out. And I think, I think, I think what Greg has pointed out too is that, you know, at least at, at highway seventy, if there's, there may be, there may be actually some, because that may actually be some mitigation.
Well, I think, I think there was some clarification of that at some of the latest floodplain. I may have been incorrect about that. If, if it's a federal, you know, if it's a presidential emergency and an event, that's mainly what they use those flood hazard mitigation funds. But there are still like clean water funds, you can go for the educational grants. There's, there's a myriad of different ones that we've shared with you and planning director.
And I would say as we move forward too, we've submitted this, Josh has submitted, submitted this to DOT, to their hydraulics unit to review it. They'll make, they'll make recommendations and comments too, and there may, there may be some guidance there, because clearly they would be, they would, they would be a big partner in, in how we move forward. So they're reviewing it currently, or will be reviewing it currently, and we'll, and then we'll get some feedback from there and see how we go forward.
You said it's late this month that you're going.
Believe, is that right, Josh, that the, that the, I can't.
The golf project is open from May twenty-third through July thirty-first.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, report. All right. Okay, Matthew, consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll just go through this briefly. You've got the adoption of minutes from your March twenty-seventh, April tenth, April fourteenth, and April seventeenth meetings. You've got a budget amendment that reflects, as, as you all are aware, as of May first, the golf courses come back under town management. And this is a, this is a budget amendment for the months of May and June for the golf course. You have the adoption of the golf course rate schedule, which is the same rates that they have currently. We didn't, we didn't change, we've been fortunate to have some guidance from the, from an advisory committee of dedicated golfers, and we feel confident that currently the rates that we have are where we're going to stay and monitor those and see what, see how that, see how that drives during the year. And then we have the proposal to award a contract to audit the accounts with, and, and our proposal is to have Gul Kilian do that again at the amount of twenty thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And those are your consent agenda items.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We now come up on for citizen comment, Elaine?
Can I sit up and wait on the public hearing?
That's what this is for, this is, this is, oh, you're going to, so you don't want to do citizen comment, you're just going to come at a public hearing? Oh, okay. All right, you didn't need to sign this then. New business, unfinished business, so we need to have a motion then to open the public hearing for the proposed flag signage ordinance to the land use code.
Submit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, I'll have, I'll have Josh come give a brief synopsis of the.
Sounds good, now that, now that we got it on the floor, let him explain.
So what you have before you for your consideration is a text amendment to the land use code, specifically chapter nine, which deals with signage. Currently, the town does not allow flag signage. This amendment would allow flag signage under a permit obtained from the Building, Planning and Zoning Department. Planning board spent about three months developing this amendment. It strives to reach a common ground on flag signage allowance. We realize the amendment can be confusing, but unfortunately, with any regulation, it's necessary to be as detailed and thorough as possible. This is why we ask that citizens contact us with questions they may have. And it goes into detail and gives definitions of what the flag signage is composed of, feather flags. Some of this is just some cleanup. Once this is, if you decide to adopt that, adopt this, you've got to have some cleanup to allow for it in some of the other sections under chapter nine. In a nutshell, that's it. I'll be glad to answer questions if you've got them.
Feather flags seem to be popular enough that would they have to be addressed?
They, they are, absolutely. Those are relatively new and have dropped up in lots of places.
All right, anybody got any questions?
Now, Josh, this is saying one sign per business or per area, correct?
What it goes into, basically, they could have one feather flag or two flags. So if they chose to have a feather flag, they could not have the two flags, or vice versa.
No, like on Sundays, Ashford High School, there's a church now that's ringing out Ashford High, part of it. And all the way down the front of the school are these feather flag, feather flags, like twenty-five or thirty of them. That wouldn't be allowed here, right?
Correct. They would be permitted one under this amendment.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Elaine? Or anyone else that wishes to speak?
Elaine, excuse me, Elaine Lotzenheiser, four Tannavina Road. I was on the planning board at the time this no moving flags were discussed, and that's what we, we did not want moving anything. At the time, white insurance was. what we, we did not want moving anything at the time, uh, White Insurance was building their building, and they had a, a moving light, lighted sign, lit sign. Anyway, it moved. And periodically, different businesses had proposed those or put them up after the fact and had to have them taken down, because we felt, the planning board did, that it was a distraction to drivers. The digital signs that are on, billboards that are up on the Asheville Highway now, that's distracting to me. I don't know how you feel, but you can't read them if you pay attention to the road. But then I don't text in the, when I drive either. But we felt, several of us did come to, and, and, I don't know that there's anybody else here that wanted this change made, they didn't think enough of it to come speak to it. I'm speaking against it, because I still feel like that we don't need. Those feather signs that popped up were against our ordinance, and that's what brought all this about. Um, the brewery that's behind the, the Lucky Bamboo, Pizza Hut had one, one or two popped up, and then there, there were no more, until all of a sudden there was one here and one here and one here, because they weren't asked to be taken down in the beginning. I told the zoning administrator that we had been, that they were not allowed, but she didn't do anything about it until we had about a dozen of them. And now, they think they are popular enough that they wanna put them up everywhere. But if you allow one, think of every business on Cherry Street or every business on State Street is allowed one sign, what would that look like? That's all I want you to consider.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? I always want to give everyone enough time to get up. Not, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the hearing's closed, do I hear a motion now to adopt ordinance oh fourteen dash oh three?
So moved.
All right, any discussion?
I would agree with Elaine that they are a distraction. I mean, if you go down McDowell Street in front of Asheville High on a Sunday morning, and you see all those signs out there, whether it's even one or twenty or thirty of them, it's still a distraction, because that thing is flapping in the wind and you're trying to see what it says on it, and it's not like it's something that's stare and stationary, where you can make out the letters on it. You're having to try to look at it real closely to see what it's saying, so I wouldn't be in favor of it.
Well, I would just say that, in response to that, that, you know, the issue of, of signage, whether it should be on premises or a flag or whatnot, i- is nothing unique in that what we're dealing with here. I was reading the news in Observer today, and they're having this issue in Raleigh, this very same debate about the issue of flag signage, uh, and the stalemate on their, their planning board in regards to it. What I, what I wanted to do with this is I wanna commend staff and also the planning board for taking the time to try to find some type of middle ground that's acceptable to both the concerns that Carlos and Elaine have expressed, but are also, uh, accepted and responsible to the needs of the businesses. We, we've heard, I don't know from everyone on this board if they've heard, but I've certainly heard from a few of them, and I, I don't find anything overtly contentious about trying to find a middle ground, which I think we've done very well with this.
I, for one, think it's a good compromise, I know they worked hard on it, and you've got, you've got the way, both sides, and I'm okay with it.
Okay. Anyone else has any other, um, we'll take a vote then, any other comments, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Uh, need to get a motion here to adopt the statement of consistency to amend the town of Black Mountain sign ordinance.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes. Four to one. All right. Um, communication from staff. Mr. Sneed.
I have to leave.
Matt?
Uh, nothing, I would just, uh, remind you that we have a, um, budget workshop Thursday morning at eight-thirty, that's right, and that, I think, as Darlene has handed out to you, you have copies of the vacancies, um, coming up for your boards and commissions. I just would remind you to, to, uh, and, and we'll move forward with that in the next month and to, to keep an eye out for, for volunteers. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any communication from the Board of Alderman? Anyone make any statements?
Um, I would mention, um, that I believe it was, oh, it was a little bit before the, like the thirteenth or something of April, but anyway, the Chamber sponsored the Economic Forum and down at Highland Farms breakfast, uh, on a morning in April, and we had second, the second time I've heard this presentation, but three supervisors, the three supervisors at the Ingalls Warehouse, Lee Stafford, Larry Rickard, and Jeff Grinstaff, and they just gave, Bob's out in the audience there, but they did a tremendous job. It's a great PowerPoint presentation and, and really just describing what they do, and it is, uh, uh, it's a great show, these guys did a great job, and, and I think Maggie mentioned that she, um, she had seen a couple of them move through Owen High School when she was there, and it's great to see they're doing great work, they did a great job, and it also makes you proud of our large corporate, um, taxpayer and resident here in the valley, Ingalls, Ingalls Markets, and, uh, and it was just a good show. It was, it was a good program, Bob, thank you for your work on that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind the town that the boards and, uh, commission vacancies are coming up, and that there's gonna be several appointments in next, uh, next board meeting. Just encourage the public to, uh, consider serving the town and volunteering on these boards, putting in an application, and, uh, it's, uh, coming up, so think about it and, uh, volunteer.
And if I can add one other thing, maybe I can get Casey to come up here and give this a plug, but about the, uh, the Parks and Rec survey that's go, going to be taking place, that the citizens will be receiving, uh, may just give them a little background on that, since I know we weren't able to have a, a lot of attendance at the various meetings the other week.
Um, yeah, the, uh, the Community Recreation Needs Assessment, uh, will be getting mailed out, um, sometime in the next couple of weeks. We're still working on finalizing the questionnaire now. Um, that is gonna be a, uh, a scientific survey, so, um, everybody in town in the, in two-eight-seven-one-one will not get that. Uh, it will be a random sample of people that get it, so if you do get it, uh, please take the couple of minutes to fill it out, mail it back in, um, and if, uh, if you know somebody, uh, that, that gets one, encourage them to fill it out, and so share that with everyone and get that information back. We would love to have a, a really high, uh, return rate on that.
Are you putting in a self-addressed stamped envelope?
Um, that, I'm not sure, um.
If you want a higher response.
Yeah, I believe, I believe.
I mean, I know it's gonna cost a little, little, little money, but if you really want to make, you wanna make it simple for people to send it back.
Right, right.
So I, I would hope you'll consider that, that you want to create a commission.
All right, thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Jason.
And, as everybody knows, or hope they know, we have signed the agreement to separate from Billy Casper. And all I can say is, hallelujah, hallelujah! Anybody else have anything to say? I adjourn the meeting.